I'm going to call this Cookeville City Council meeting to order for the July 17, 2014 meeting. Ms. Kathy, would you please give us a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
Four present, one absent.
And we do have quorum. Item one on our agenda is to, well, actually, before we do that, we need, we're going to have a moment of silent prayer and then pledge allegiance. So if we all stand, please. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's go on. We'll feedback. Okay. Rick?
Gail went back to tell them.
Okay. Just let us know back there, guys, for have feedback. Okay, item one on our agenda is just, we need to consider the approval, we need to approve our agenda as presented. Do we have any comments on that, or do I have a?
You have a motion. I so move.
Second. Any questions or discussion on that? If not so, let's all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
On to new business, item three. This, item three, the first, no.
We need to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
No, in fact, we did it, okay. Item two, excuse me, we need to consider approval of the minutes of our last meeting on June 30, 2014.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? If none, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Now we can move on to our new business, item three. First item under new business is Consider Resolution Number 140712, approving a memo of understanding for Project Victor. This authorizes the Industrial Development Board to negotiate and accept payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes. This also authorizes the city manager to execute all instruments necessary to effectuate the same. And this is being sponsored by our city manager, Mr. Jim Shipley.
Did you want to read the resolution, my mayor, or do you want me to?
No. Jim, Mr. Shipley, why don't you go ahead and do that, please?
I'll be happy to do it. I think you've already read the title, so I'll just start with the whereas. Whereas the city of Cookeville, Tennessee is vitally interested in the economic welfare of its citizens and wishes to provide the necessary leadership to enhance this area's capabilities for growth and development. And whereas the provision of jobs to area citizens by local industry is both necessary and vital to the economic well-being of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee. Whereas the Fast Track Economic Development Program.
I think you're reading, I think you're reading the wrong.
Mr. Shipley, I think you're on the wrong one.
Well, somebody put this up front on me here, and that's what I was reading.
Well, it's always good to follow directions.
I got it right here.
Here.
You got it?
I'm glad he read it instead of me.
Well, it's the first thing they put it in front of me. I got it. I hope this is the same one in my book that's that one.
We'll correct you again.
I heard y'all mumbling over there. All right, for that, I'm just going to read the whole thing again. Resolution of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee, approving a memorandum of understanding for Project Victor, authorizing the city manager to execute all instruments necessary to effect the transactions described therein, and authorizing the Industrial Development Board of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee to negotiate and accept payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes as set forth in the project agreement. Whereas the Industrial Development Board of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee, the IDB, is authorized under the provisions of Chapter 53, Title VII of Tennessee Code Annotated, as amended from time to time the Act, to issue, sell, and deliver revenue bonds and revenue notes, and to use the proceeds therefrom for, among other things, the purpose of financing, acquiring, improving, constructing, equipping, owning, leasing, and disposing of properties in order to promote industry, trade, commerce, tourism, and recreation, and thereby maintain and increase employment opportunities and further the use of natural resources in the state of Tennessee, by inducing manufacturing, industrial, governmental, educational, financial service, commercial, and recreational enterprises to locate in or remain in the state of Tennessee. And whereas in order to implement the public purposes enumerated in the Act, and in furtherance thereof, to induce Project Victor LLC, a Delaware Limited liability company, or its assignee, the company, to construct, acquire, equip, and conduct operations in a certain distribution center facility to be located in the city of Cookeville, Tennessee, the project, the construction, acquisition, owning, and leasing of which by which, of which by the IDB is expected to maintain or increase employment in the area. The IDB is offered to issue its revenue notes under and pursuant to the provisions of the Act, and to use the proceeds therefrom to provide for the payment of the cost of acquiring and constructing the project, and the leasing of the project to the company, in order to effectuate a payment in lieu of tax incentive pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in a proposed project agreement, which has been submitted to the Cookeville City Council and is incorporated herein by this reference. And whereas the Cookeville City Council desires to confirm its approval of the project agreement and the economic incentives therein set forth, and whereas a memorandum of understanding, the MOU, has been submitted to the Cookeville City Council and is incorporated herein by this reference, to be entered into by and among the company, the IDB, and the city of Cookeville, Tennessee, which MOU the Cookeville City Council desires to approve. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Cookeville City Council as follows. Number one, that pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated Section 7-53-305B, the Cookeville City Council hereby affirms the delegation to the IDB of authority to negotiate and accept from the corporation's lesses, payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes, and finds that such authorization is deemed to be in furtherance of the IDB's public purposes as defined in the Act. And the form, content, and provisions of the project agreement are hereby approved. The form, content, and provisions of the MOU are hereby approved, and the city manager of the city of Cookeville is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver such MOU, and and on behalf of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee, with such changes therein as he may approve, his signature affixed thereto, to be conclusive evidence of such approval. The mayor, the city manager, and all departments and agencies of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee are hereby authorized and directed to take such further actions as are deemed necessary or advisable to carry out the intent and purposes of the project agreement, the MOU, and this resolution. And the city manager is authorized and directed to execute all instruments necessary to effect the transaction described in the MOU, including but not limited to option contracts to purchase property and deeds of conveyance, adopted this 17th day of July, 2014.
Very good. Thank you.
And we have a little, want to go through just a little quick PowerPoint presentation about the main points of the memorandum of understanding.
Do we have a motion?
We don't have a motion.
I think we need a motion.
That'd be good.
Okay.
Mr. Executed in four original, execute four originals.
Okay, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion, motion to approve item three resolution.
So moved, and to?
Execute four originals.
And to execute four originals.
Second. Okay, is there, before we have the PowerPoint presentation, is there any discussion?
Wouldn't that be part of the discussion?
This is, yeah. Okay. Any discussion from the council, my council members, before we get started?
Oh, no.
You guys good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Mr. Shipley, go ahead, please.
Okay, the parties to Project Victor are the company, the city of Cookeville, and the Industrial Development Board of the city of Cookeville. Company investment, is estimated an initial investment of $100 million for the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a facility. The company expects to hire 700 full-time equivalent FTE employees by 12/31/2020. The company shall purchase the land, which is the project site, and ancillary, I don't like that word, ancillary property. Ancillaryary?
Good.
Yeah. Ancillary.
Ancillary.
Mm-hmm. And the company shall make payment in lieu of tax payments. It's the pilot. The project acquisition is 257.37 acres. To be acquired on behalf of the company with company's funds, 186.02 acres conveyed to the IDB, and that's the project site or facility location. 15 and a half acres will be conveyed to the company, and that's the ancillary property. And acquired on behalf of the city with city funds will be 55.85 acres to be retained and owned by the city. And this is contingent upon funds being advanced to the city from the company for The funding for the property acquisition, company, the company funding obligation is $9,630,665.23 advanced to the city to acquire property. And the company will acquire the following acres, 186.02 and the 15 and a half acres. The funding obligation of the city is $1,458,214.77, and those funds are budgeted in this year's budget. $421,277.77 from the general fund, $1,037,14 from the gas department, and that's the 55.85 acres retained and owned by the city. The gas department will use the land to construct a gas interconnect with Middle Tennessee Natural Gas. Total property cost is $11,088,880, 257.37 acres acquired for all the parties involved. And the property will not be acquired unless the company advances the $9,630,665.23. There is a Fast Track Economic Development Grant Program, which we will deal with by resolution in item four. That's the one I started to read. The city will apply for the grant from the state of Tennessee Economic, the ECD. ECD has committed grant funds to Project Victor, and the grant amount is $4,827,500. The city will pass the grant proceeds to the company to reimburse the company $4,827,500 for land cost. There is no obligation on the city of Cookeville to reimburse the company for any land cost should the grant not be approved. I think that's a very important point out. Tennessee Department of Transportation has committed state industrial access funds to improve roads to the project site. That's Mindlec Creek Road and Bennett Road. Highlands Park Boulevard, the company has been insistent that the city would make temporary modifications to the Highlands Park Boulevard roundabout until completion of the interchange, at which time we'll go back and build the roundabout back. They just feel like it's too big a term for their trucks, but we have plenty of engineers that think it's fine. But at this point, whatever the company wants. Okay, the pilot program, which is payment in lieu of tax. It's a 30-year pilot agreement on the facility and equipment. The company will make payment in lieu of taxes to the city and county. They will pay 15% of ad valorem taxes that would have been due on the facility and equipment, and additional pilot payments would be required if certain minimum employment levels are not met. Specific terms of the tax abatement will be approved by the Industrial Development Board. The company to pay full ad valorem taxes on the 15 and a half acres that they will retain. And I think that's the end of the pilot point.
Oh, great. All right. Mr. Shipley, thank you for, that was, that was lengthy, but very informative, and I hope everybody appreciated that. Prior to the vote, just a moment, I just want to, just take a moment, if I have the liberty to, just to thank a lot of people. And we, we can't, a lot of people, administrators, a lot of our city manager, Melinda Kiefer, we have the tentacles of, that have reached out to get this project done, have went far and wide. Putnam County, the Putnam County Commission, it goes, it goes far and wide, and it, this took, this definitely took help from, from everybody. Grassroots all the way forward to the city council. And I'd like to just, since I have the opportunity to sit here, I'd like to tell everybody, all those folks, thank you for a, for a project that has been, we've waited for, for a long time, and it's been, it's been very well done. So, that being said, council members, do you have any, any more discussion prior to our vote for the motion on item three?
Just echo what you said.
Yes. I think we need to offer our appreciation, appreciation to the state of Tennessee.
Oh, definitely.
They have stepped up big. A lot of meetings in Nashville, but they, I think the state really wanted this project up here, so.
And, and the great thing, one of the great things about that, thank you, Mr. Shipley, for helping us remember that, great thing about this, this is a win, 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 win for, for lots of people.
This is a partnership.
Yeah.
A big time partnership.
And in my opinion, this is, this is government and private enterprise working at their best. So thank, thank you to everybody, and thank you, state of Tennessee. Okay, if we're going to have any, if no more discussion, it's time for us to vote on item three. Everybody vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Yes. Okay. All right. Deep breath. Because this is so significant, and in order to expedite, expedite, the process of getting this done, Jim, you got me all messed up.
Yeah.
We're going to, I'd like to, I'd like for us to recess for just a very short while, while we get these documents signed, and what we're going to do is, we're going to get these documents signed, we're going to hand these over to our Industrial Developmental Board, and you guys are meeting at 6 o'clock tonight, is that correct, here in about another 10 minutes? Okay. Understand that I can't be there, since we got to continue with our meeting, which ticks me off, but, so is that, if my council members are okay with that, do I need a motion for that, Ms. Anderson, to recess?
Yes. I move that we take a short recess, no longer than five minutes. Is that good enough? Or do you need more time than that? All right. So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great.
All. Vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Yeah, I was sure that had happened. We're listening up here.
Does it have a different pen?
No.
Well, if somebody should have told me that.
Yeah.
I didn't think that looked like the right resolution.
It wasn't.
Part's done. Thank you.
I feel bad for Matt. Matt's your signee. Can't tomorrow. So the ECD Fast Track is next.
Yes.
I'm not going to read that.
What?
I think they decided not to.
Yeah, they did.
I really don't think we do. But that means.
My pen's about to quit.
Good to do.
Good job, buddy.
That is, this, sometimes I sit back and think of this, we've been working well. go in and watch the signing or listen to the discussion that's going on with the IDB on their part, it's going to be held over in our conference room, just right next door here, so if you'd like to do that, we're going to just continue doing really exciting stuff here, so you might, you might want to go over there. Okay. Anything else? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order, and we'll begin, begin this with now, with item four on our, under new business. Item four says that we're going to consider Resolution 140713, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the TDECD for Fast Track Economic Development Funds, and if approved, the said grants will provide assistance in acquiring land for Project Victor. And our sponsor for this is Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor, vice mayor, I'm not sure, and council, this resolution will authorize the city manager to execute all documents and contracts in order to obtain those grant funds from the state of Tennessee. And the grant will be applied for by the city. ECD, as Mr. Shipley pointed out earlier, has committed these funds. The state funding board will have to meet to, for final approval of these, but we're expecting that to occur sometime in mid-August. The grant amount will be $4,827,500, and again, once the city receives those funds, we will pass those funds back to Project Victor to reimburse them for land cost. And again, as Mr. Shipley pointed out, there's no obligation on the city, should those funds not be approved, for some strange reason, that the city would have to reimburse Victor for those, those funds. But I'd recommend approval.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. All right. Any, any questions for Mr. Davidson, or any discussion for my council members? No. If no, that's all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Move to item, item five. Item five is, we're to hold a public hearing and consider, on the, on the first reading, ordinance 140713, this is amending the budget of the Economic Development Fund of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015. Again, Mr. Davidson is sponsoring this.
Mayor and council members, as, as we're going to be the ones to acquire the property initially for this project, going into the budget year, the city budgeted, as Mr. Shipley pointed out earlier, budgeted funds to acquire property that we believe we would acquire on behalf of the city and would retain by the city. So we budgeted those funds. The land that's going to be acquired for Project Victor was not budgeted, and this, this ordinance will amend our, our budget to recognize those expenditures. We'll have additional revenue, $9,630,665.23, which is a contribution from Project Victor to acquire land on their behalf. In addition, we expect to have grant proceeds from the state of Tennessee, $4,827,500 in grant proceeds. And again, we will use those funds to acquire property for Project Victor, total of $9,636,6523. And then, once we receive the grant funds, we'll pass those funds back to Victor, which is $4,827,500. And just to summarize, again, what Mr. Shipley's pointed out, was just to make sure that, that it is clear, the city's cost for land that we're going to own and retain is $1,458,214.77. Again, that's already been budgeted. Project Victor's net contribution after their reimbursement with the grant proceeds from the state of Tennessee is $4,803,165.23, and the state of Tennessee will have $4,827,500 toward the land cost. But again, I would recommend approval of this budget amendment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do I have, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. And let me just, I would like to just remark, this is, this is budgeted, and this was budgeted without a tax increase. Yes. It was. City of Cookeville, though, we, in our budget sessions, this was taken care of with, without a tax increase. Entity such as this, without a tax increase. Any discussion or questions for Mr. Davidson? If done, let's vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go, we're going to move on to item six. This is, item six is to consider appointment to the Cookeville Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees, and since our, our mayor is not available tonight, it's, this is going to be sponsored by myself, Vice Mayor Epps. And the, after scouring the fields out there, we found, I think we found a good, a great candidate, and I'd like to recommend Mr. Wayne Spain to be, take the position, the vacated position for hospital board of trustees. And do I?
I'll put that in a form of a motion, that we appoint Wayne Spain to the Cookeville Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees.
Second.
We had several people that had, that were interested in serving on the hospital board, and we just are so fortunate to have so many good people to choose from, and we're, we love our volunteers.
I agree with Connie. Every, every time that in, that it came time for us to appoint somebody to the board of trustees, we've always had very many candidates, quite capable, quite, you know, they've got the credentials, et cetera, and, but I believe that Mr. Spain will serve well.
Yeah. We're very fortunate this time to have multiple choices to fill this position, and it just so happened that Wayne came to town, but he's a great choice. I think he'll be a, a great addition to the board at Cookeville Regional.
And well, well said, and, and last but certainly not least, is that this is, this is a hardworking board. I think most folks realize that this is probably one of the hardest working boards that we make appointments to, so.
That's the most demanding.
For, for hard, for folks that have busy lives and, and are already in, in successful business people, for them to commit their time to this is, is very special, so.
In the lines.
Yes.
For seven years.
For seven years, yes. Okay, so we, we have a motion, a second. Do we have any other questions or discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item, item seven, item seven is we're going to consider authorizing our city manager to enter into engineering contract for utility relocation, and this is relative to the new fifth interchange project, and this is being sponsored by Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council here tonight seeking authorization for the city manager to enter into an engineering contract with Consolidated Technologies and. into an engineering contract with Consolidated Technologies Incorporated to perform professional engineering services for utility line installation and relocation within the TDOT's proposed fifth interchange project down at Monilick Creek Road. CTI Services will allow our department to meet TDOT's timeframe for including our utility relocations into their project. They will also act as our representatives during the construction project and help assure that all the TDOT requirements are met for our reimbursements. And what got us, we've been meeting with TDOT for a couple of years more on fifth interchange, but on July 2nd, we got a letter in the mail that said, okay, you've got to have all your stuff in by August. I can't remember the date, I can't see it, but. August 13th to start. If, if you're going to get in this project, you've got to start getting your, all your information in and by October 3rd, you've got to have all your plans done if you want it in this project. And we do want it in that project. So we sort of fast-tracked and talked to our engineering company that we deal with, has done relocation projects with TDOT Chattanooga. They did the Washington Avenue. When we did Washington Avenue, they represented us on that project. And basically, the red lines, I think this red line should be in this right away, but what's outlined in yellow is the new right-of-way locations. We have a, one of our 30-inch water lines mains that comes out of the water plant towards town was, is going to be included in that, in that new right-of-way. There's some 12-inch line that ties into it that feeds into the new Highland Business Park. The new, the new line, the new Bennett Road going to the north. Everything that's in the right-of-way is sort of reimbursable and we're looking at maybe moving some of the 30-inch line back down to this right-of-way and bringing it back up. And some of it, we're not going to replace in, under the interstate, we'll tie back in. And a lot of the, a lot of the lines that's in their right-of-way are reimbursable. We, we will be doing some betterment. We, we want to add a line up here while this project's been under, under construction to get a 12-inch line headed out to Bennett Road for that project and we'll want to take it out at that point. So though, that kind of cost will not be reimbursable. But, let's see what else I had here. So the engineering services, I broke it down by pre-construction, construction inspection, but the totals not to exceed is 181,000. We've done a preliminary estimate. We think we'll be reimbursed $132,306.92 out of that cost. We also have done a preliminary rough, we think it's about a million dollars worth of work and we're anticipating probably about 90% of that will be reimbursable depending on how we get it designed and put back in. So I would recommend your approval.
Okay, do I have, do I have a motion to approve item, item seven?
So moved.
Second. Questions?
So, Mr. Kelly, did I hear you right? Did you say that 90% of that approximately would be reimbursed?
That's our best guess as of today without anything being designed yet.
Yeah, okay.
But that, that's a rough estimate.
Pretty good.
Mr. Kelly, right, could you explain a little bit more to me about the reimbursable versus non-reimbursable? What, what delineates that? Is that?
If, you see everything that's in yellow?
Right.
If, if our utilities are in that yellow and it's going to be affected and we need to do something with it? That's considered reimbursable. If we decide, we could leave it there, we don't want to leave it there and they might would let us leave it there, but if we say, well, let's get it out, we don't want it to be in the middle of the interchange and have to maintain and do everything. We, we, we may want to bring it down on this road and bring it back up and, and we'll still have some in there anyway. They might consider that's reimbursable. We're pretty sure based on preliminary consultations with TDOT. This line over here, there is no utilities, we don't have any utilities in that area, but we want, while they're building all of that, to get a 12-inch off this 30 and bring it up and stub it out for that new Bennett Road. That's betterment, they don't reimburse for that.
Okay.
That's okay, though, that would, that would be something that's.
We want it put in during the project.
Okay, okay, thank you for explaining that to me.
Sure.
Any other, any other questions, council members? Okay, if we have any other questions, I think we're ready to vote. All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
I observe that.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go to item, item eight. Item eight, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an engineering contract to relocate and extend natural gas facilities. And this is again relative to the new fifth interchange project, interchange project. And this, this is being sponsored by Mr. Mills, Jeff Mills.
Vice Mayor and Council, I won't go through all the preliminaries again. It's pretty well echoing what Ronnie just said. We're in, won't get into the same project with TDOT. Here is just a, a minor thing of what we're looking at there. The dotted line on top up here will be our betterment part of the project. We currently have a 6-inch line that, that runs through there. It's up here at the top. That will be replaced and all that should be reimbursable. The red line right in the center, right there, is going to be a betterment. We don't have that in place yet, but we want that in their project. What that's going to do, it's going to tie into the current line that's in the Highlands Business Park. And we're going to get it outside their right-of-way area during this project and that will eventually go to the Middle Tennessee Interconnect that we're going to build with those, those people. So what it'll do is just let us get it all in there while the, all that's being torn up and we won't have to come back in and pay for boars under new roads and all that kind of stuff. So it theoretically should save us some money in the long run. We're looking at probably, here's a breakdown on the engineering firms. The pre-construction area, engineering for us, probably simpler than Ronnie's, it's $24,400. Construction engineering will be $14,400. This CTI will be doing our inspections for us during the TDOT project. There are several forms and stuff that have to be kept up with during the project to meet TDOT's requirements to be reimbursed. So they'll be doing all that. So that cost will be $12,700. Total fee will be $51,500, not to exceed that. If it, like I said, is a cost-plus job, we're probably looking at half of that reimbursable for us because that's most of the, half of the project will be a betterment on us to, to get the line in their TDOT's project to move out. And I request your approval.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mills. Do I have a motion to approve item A?
So moved.
Second. Do we have any questions for Mr. Mills, from members of the council?
The CTI, they've had a lot of experience dealing with TDOT, haven't they? Yes, they have, yes. And then, one reason we're using them, the gas department personally has never used them, but Mr. Kelly's used them quite a bit. So we, we had originally where we're trying to do this contract as one contract.
That makes sense.
And then just kind of split the cost. And still, it's going to kind of go that way, but we've got to have two contracts for TDOT's requirements. But they'll be doing, you know, a lot of the work they do for Ronnie will be for, you know, they'll be doing the same thing for us, so two companies won't have to do the same thing, which is should, should help us on cost-wise there also.
Makes sense, okay.
Same thing, just separate billing.
Same thing, just separate billing, yes.
All right, any other questions? Okay, if you're ready, then let's vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Here we go, item, item nine. Item nine. Item nine is consider authorizing this, our city manager to execute utility relocation contracts with TDOT relative, again, to the, to the new fifth interchange project. And again, Mr. Kelly's going to.
Mayor and council, part of the requirements in TDOT's, in the TDOT requirements, there's going to be some forms and I've, I've put one up on the screen, but it, it asks for the signature who, who with the city that's authorized to enter into contracts and agreements with TDOT. And Mr. Shipley, the city manager, will be that person. I thought we needed to get the council to authorize him to enter into any of those contracts officially. Later, we're going to have to agree to submit dollars. If our betterment is $100,000, they're going to want us to deposit a check in their account and then they will draw off that. So we will be requesting checks and so we need, I felt like we needed some council authorization to authorize city manager to enter into those contracts with TDOT.
Okay.
And I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, all right. Do I have a motion to approve item nine?
So moved.
Second. Questions?
Just a comment, I, I think this is forward-looking so that as we move forward with this, we'll be able to expedite it, you know.
Everything's.
Apparently, we're going to have to move to the state's pace and them not to our pace, as proven in the past.
Yes, it's very fast-tracked.
Yeah.
A lot more than normal. Mr. Wood, for your question, CTI has worked with City of Chattanooga, American Water down there with some of their big relocations, so they've, they've had a lot of experience around.
Any questions, Kelly? Okay, if everybody's ready to vote, we all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item 10. Item 10, consider authorizing the city manager to execute TDOT license agreements relative to the Tennessee, Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail Construction. And this is being sponsored by Ms. Kiefer. That's not Melinda Kiefer.
She's changed.
Go ahead, Melinda.
Vice Mayor and Council, I'm taking care of this for Melinda while she's occupied.
Okay.
This is a license agreement with TDOT to allow us to construct approximately 160 feet of the trail on TDOT right-of-way, which is at the intersection of 12th Street and Washington. It's a 25-year agreement at no cost to the city. The approximate location of where the, the lease will be will be the end of the sidewalk on 12th Street and come up to approximately this point where the TDOT right-of-way ends. The trail originally went along the railroad right-of-way and crossed Washington here. And TDOT requested that we relocate the trail so the trail would cross at a, at the Washington 12th Street intersection, thought it might be more safe. So that's why we had to come get the license agreement at this date now. And I would request your approval.
All right, have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments?
Will this speed the project up any?
Excuse me?
Will this speed the project up any?
Uh, yes, but this was something that was required for us to do at their request to relocate this. So yes, it's one of the last things we need to do to get it ready to be built out.
Okay, thank you.
It's kind, it's kind of zigzaggy, but you know, if you think about it, we do, well, but it, there is a stoplight there and that, again, I could see why they would, why they would prefer that, so.
I just look forward to being able to use it.
Will you put a crosswalk there? How, how? There's a crosswalk already there. So, and with.
Traffic signal.
Okay. So, that's why they wanted to move there since we had.
That makes sense.
Already ramp, handicap ramps, everything's already there, so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So the park, from here to here is already constructed. What just, the part we're going to have to build is right there. So we'll just use existing facilities there and then we'll start the construction back up going this way.
Okay. Very good. Okay, any, any other, any other questions? If so, let's vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item 11. Consider warning bids for our, for annual and our, and semi-annual materials. And this is. There's, there's Greg Brown again. Sponsored by Greg Brown.
Vice Mayor and Council, we recently advertised and received bids for construction materials we use throughout the year. All of them is on a annual basis except for asphalt and aggregate, those were on six months. There's the results of the bids. That's the, the low bidder on each one. That's several more. I would, I would recommend the, the low bidder being approved on each one of those items.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? All right, let's vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Item 12. It's consider approval of design company for the community playground, community build playground project and this is being sponsored by Mr. Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. A little bit of history real quick, if I can do it quickly. You'll remember that for several years, we had a very popular playground at the YMCA called Kids Kingdom that was a community build playground. A really great project that many people in the community were enthusiastic about and got a lot of great use. That playground fell into disrepair and became non-compliant with, with the current safety, playground safety standards at that time. And it was determined that it was in the best interest to remove that playground. And there was a new committee formed back then to begin raising money and to re-establish a community build, a large playground for kids in the community. That community was established, started raising money, but they didn't have a location. And that became a, a real problem and a real setback for that committee. Committee did raise some money and in 2008 actually came to the city and asked if this, if they could give that money to the city with the sole intent of, and the stipulation that that money be used for a large community playground, all-inclusive, fully accessible playground in the downtown area. That was the stipulation. And that has been, we did receive that money back at that time and, and it's been in the city, with the city since that time. Since, in, in recent days, recent weeks, we've had a new enthusiasm for the possibility of a community build playground of that nature. And we had enthusiastic citizens, including Ashley Swan and Kelly Swallows, who agreed to spearhead a committee, a new committee that would raise money, raise enthusiasm and build a new community playground if we could identify the location. You'll think back with me too, to the development of Dogwood Park and there was a playground in the original design, a master plan of Dogwood Park. The issue became for us that these two projects didn't fit together well because there's not enough space in Dogwood Park, acceptable space in Dogwood Park, to create this type of playground. So we looked at doing something in very close proximity to Dogwood Park and we identified the property that is right across the street on Fleming that is partly parking lot and partly not parking lot. And we met with Mr. Shipley and, and talked with many of you about the possibility of dedicating that piece of property, or a portion of that piece of property, about 12,000 square feet of that property, to this community build project. That seemed to be a great way to go because it's downtown, it's very close to Dogwood Park, it's very visible, it's right across Broad Street from Dogwood Park, there's nearby parking. It was just a, it met a lot of great criteria. And so I'm here today to ask you two things. One is to officially approve the use of a portion of that property for this community build playground. And also, we then followed up and did requests for proposals to playground companies that do this sort of project. And we received four recommendations and they, or four proposals, they were scored by five different people. You see those names there at the top. And the overwhelming, well, the majority, everyone agreed, it was unanimous that playgrounds by Leathers was, was the top-ranked proposal of those four that we received. So I, I would recommend that we, we have Leathers do this, this process, go through this process with Leathers and do the design, have them do the design and that we utilize the property. And I have a, I think, yes, there's a little bit of a, a map, a survey map of that particular property. You see Fleming, whoops. You see Fleming on this side over here. And we're looking at, and this is Broad Street up here, so we're looking at taking about 12, these 12 spaces of parking lot and going all the way over here. It's about 12,000 square feet. The entry to Dogwood Park is right across Broad Street up there. So I would ask that you would approve utilizing that particular property or portion of that property and that we work with Leathers to do the design. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Before I ask for a motion, just, if the council's okay with this, you have basically, you have really, actually, this is two parts. If there's going to be, if no one, like you wanted us to divide, to approve us dividing up the property for the use of the playground and then approve, approving the company, if it's okay with the council, we could, is it okay if we do both of these in the same, in the same motion? Okay, then I would, then I would ask, if everybody's okay, you care with it? Then I'd ask.
Yeah, with respect to this company, we need to negotiate the contract with them. They're the, approved to negotiate a contract with them, then the contract will have to They're the, approve to negotiate a contract with them, then the contract will have to come back to the council for approval.
So the motion, so the motion should state that...
Yeah.
It's a motion to approve negotiating the contract with them.
With that company, yes. And then if you want to do the location, you can do them both in the same motion.
Okay. So we'll do both. And the motion's going to state that we use the properties, parking space, the property that the city owns, and approving, approving negotiation with Leathers. Is that right? Is that correct? Okay. I have a motion?
You have a motion, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor. I move that we utilize the property that is owned by the city of Cookeville as stated by Mr. Woods, and that we negotiate a contract with Leathers Company for creating said playground.
Second.
Now, now...
Now discussion.
Now questions and comments and discussion.
One of the things that I do want to point out is that this playground will be totally handicapped, accessible for all children. And that is part of what some of the problems with getting a playground made in such a way so that children who are in wheelchairs or have other devices will be able to use this playground. And I'm looking forward to that. Of course, everybody knows Dogwood Park is near and dear to my heart, and I don't have any little children to go over there, but I'll go over there and watch them at school.
I think it is going to be very important to design a safe crossing at the street because you can expect people to go from the playground to the park and back and forth. And I think that's going to be a critical component of this.
Do you have a timeframe?
The timeframe is the committee will meet in the next couple of weeks. And we hope to do a kickoff of this sometime in the fall after we negotiate with the company and determine the best approach and their availability. And we come to some agreement with them, we would do a design day in the fall of this year. And that would kick off the whole campaign. And it would be a community involvement design day. We want children's pictures, we want their input, we want community meetings and community involvement in that design process. And then we would take about a year's time, roughly a year's time, 10 months maybe, if we can go that quickly, to raise all the money that we need to raise to make that happen. And then, in the fall of 2015, we would do the community build process. So we're a little over a year away from having the actual playground here if all goes well.
So if anybody feels generous, they can contact you, at least your services.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Mr. Woods, with dealing with Leathers, I'm sure they've possibly given you some estimates of cost in the square footage. With the funds on hand right now, how much of a gap roughly do we have?
Substantial.
Substantial.
We're, right now, initial goals would be that we're looking at raising $350,000.
Substantial. But it's recent, I mean...
Well, I've actually had an opportunity. I've been involved with this project kind of from the get-go, way a long time ago, too. Okay. But, and I had the opportunity to actually look at some of the concepts that are out there. And this is, this is not just a kind of a seesaw jungle gym playground. This is like an iconic destination playground, is what it is. This is the kind of playground that people will come from, come from counties away, that we'll draw from Nashville, et cetera. It will be, and it will essentially, not only will it be functional for children, it will be kind of an iconic, an iconic symbol of Cookeville, et cetera, et cetera. But they can actually build, build this playground in such a way that some of the symbols that we have of Cookeville, like our train depot or our west side downtown, they can kind of build this playground that sort of caricatures those things. Am I correct in saying that?
That's correct. That capability is there, yes.
So even though it's pretty expensive, playgrounds are expensive.
Well, and I would say that the surfacing is half, half the cost of the playground.
So that people can get on it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, I think this is going to be a good complement for Dogwood Park, that the location and proximity is that close. And as Mr. Rader said, we're going to have to be very careful when planning a crosswalk for the safety of people using it. So there's a lot of work ahead.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Then let's all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. We're at the, basically getting close, ending up our meeting here. But before we do, during, we have a portion of our meeting, we always try to allow citizens or any other delegations, if they would like, if they have, would like to speak, all we do is ask you to come to the podium, state your name and your business, and we'll give you about three minutes.
Lloyd Klein.
Hello, Mr. Klein.
I have a question, back to Victor. We had a meeting here probably two months ago that Victor was discussed. And Victor, at that time, we didn't know if it was a wannabe or if it was a reality. Are we at a point now where it is a reality, or is it still a maybe-be?
I'd like to direct that, and answer that question to either our city manager or our lawyer, Mr. Rader.
I like to say we're on the two-yard line, and we don't want to fumble at this point.
Okay.
And if we say much more, I might fumble.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
I mean, a lot of this stuff has to be no comment till it...
I guess the concern I have, again, is spending of money from the taxpayers and giving you that authority.
There won't be a penny spent until it's a done deal.
Okay, that's fair.
That was very clearly stated in everything that we read tonight. It's very clearly stated that the city of Cookeville is not going to be out the money unless it's a done deal.
Yeah.
And it was said over and over.
MOU has a lot of triggers in it.
What is MOU?
Memorandum of Understanding. I learned that this year, too.
Okay, thank you.
It's another one of those jargons that happens.
I have another question or a thought. I'm really excited about the playground thing. And I would take what Attorney Rader mentioned. And I think what we ought to consider there is an underground passageway from Dogwood under the road to that other area because there'll be a liability in a, probably any other manner, or else go over it. It's something to consider. The other issue for me would be the, would there be a possibility of somehow, if there was a desire by our citizens, and I go back to that because I'm always going back to what our public wants, that we could possibly include a swimming pool into this environment? Or do we not have the real estate to do it?
We don't have the real estate there.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know that.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course, there's been, there's been some discussion amongst the council about, you know, although the watermelon in the park has been so successful that we've, it's been looked at in the past, but we might readdress that at some, at some point in time, so. Are there any other members of the audience that would like to get in for a moment? No? Council members, anything?
Well, I just want to give a plug to the community band. They're going to be playing again this coming Monday. And then the third Thursday of every month, there is a concert in the park. Nothing thrills me more than to walk over to Dogwood Park and see the families there enjoying the fountain, but then also enjoying the free concerts on a lovely night. And you just can't get more hometown America than that, in my opinion. And I just wanted to give a shout-out again about that, Monday night. I think they start at 7:30. Plus, they have the movies in the park also. And that's coming up...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Is it?
Oh, that's the depot, I'm sorry.
Well, that's two. That's part of us, too, is the depot movie. So, you know, look in the newspaper, look around, check out our website. City of Cookeville is a happening place.
Thank you, Alma.
Early voting starts tomorrow.
Woo, woo!
I just, I just like to, the only thing I'd like, like that is that, you know, of course, the only reason I'm sitting here is because Mayor Swallows could not be here. And I feel really bad for him because Mayor Swallows has worked, he's worked very, very hard also to have, to have this project, Victor, and things like the playground and things like this come to fruition. And I really know he wanted to and desired to be here. I feel very bad for him, but he's, he's running for that state senate seat, and he's out, he's out at some debate. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, I'm not speaking for him, but I'm, Larry Epps is just speaking, letting, let anybody know that he really, he really wished he could have been there. And I feel bad that he is not here. I wish he was here. That being said. Anything else?
Good job, Vice Mayor.
Jim?
I just wanted to say, you know, this project's been a long coming, and we're getting close. But I'd want to compliment the department heads and their staff, all the work they're going to be doing. We couldn't be in better hands on a...
Second.
...fast pace that has been going so long. We're in good hands with them, and I appreciate all their hard work and work they will be doing.